Is it top wire?
Top wire.
Yes, it is. Okay, call a meeting to order at 2:08. We will meet in executive session to discuss the Atsne Water Highway Parks and Cemetery contract, and we will not be returning to open session after conclusion of that executive session. Mr. Gant is recording the meeting as well as our recorded secretary. Anybody else? Any comments or questions from anybody at this point in time? Item number one, we're going to talk about the community host agreement, which it looks like Mr. Smith has been working on.
Yes. The topics, and I believe I had this put in your book, it's the one that says if the zoning bylaw changes approved town meeting. This was in preparation for the moderator's forum that happened last week and contains summary, if you look on a typical host community agreement can and likely would include. This is a collection of the terms that KP has suggested should be in there. There are a few other ones that are very sort of specific to the legal requirements, but these are ones that they see as appropriate that are in sample agreements they've sent me that they've done with other towns. These are also aligned with what Green Meadows expects in terms of they would agree to. Basically their lawyers have told them these are what you're going to get. And they are aligned, as far as I can tell.
Excuse me, I got, I think I gotta take this. So go ahead, John.
So, and also the kinds of things that we've talked about and so on. One sort of big question on this, because these are relatively straightforward, yes or no, they are or they aren't, is the annual payment to the town. And the current thinking is that for cultivation only, and there's only one or two places in Massachusetts that are like this, they just do them in different ways, the cultivation portion of the business, it seems that the standard, the standard contract, the way it's going is one percent to one and a quarter percent. And so I've already kind of gotten a clue that they are going to be okay with one and a quarter percent. So my suggestion is that we would say one and a quarter percent with a perhaps minimum $50,000 per year. So they would start off, we know we get a minimum of $50,000. And if the amount that they would owe on the one and a quarter percent of retail sales is over, makes that total over 50, then we would get whatever goes above that. Now, it wouldn't be 50 plus one and a quarter, it would be one and a quarter with a $50,000 minimum, so that we would get a minimum and wouldn't suddenly find ourselves if they had a bad crop and do things and they did zero that year, we'd still get 50. So that's my, that's my sense of where we're at. And I think the most important thing, and I want to talk with them and with, and with KP, that is the one thing that I'm most concerned that we perhaps reach consensus on. And we're going for the high side of what other towns seem to be doing, but there's any reason not to do that frankly. And that we then sort of officially say, these are what we want to have, and I suspect we're going to get an agreement without any, any issue. The other thing I think that we should decide is how long do we want this HCA to go? They've suggested that it be reviewed every two years. We might want to do a less than five-year agreement, but I don't know whether that's necessary or not. It takes time and effort to do that. I think they would be fine if we chose to do an initial two-year if we so chose, but I'm not sure what we gain by doing that.
John, you said that this document was based on discussions that they've had with other towns or something? You mentioned other towns in your introducing this.
KP, yeah, KP has done.
Oh, KP has done.
KP has done it, yeah. I've not had conversations with other towns. There are a handful of KP lawyers in the Massachusetts office, of which Amy Questle is one, who are focusing essentially exclusively on working the marijuana laws on behalf of their clients and towns, because this is big everywhere. And what's been happening is the state law does not allow more than three percent, but that seems to be something, on sales, that seems to be something that is being applied mostly to retail. When you think about retail, you have a really genuine need for, and a dispensary, in other words, a retail dispensary, you know, patrols, inspections of a different kind, making sure licensing laws are being followed, all those other things. So there are a number of areas that might justify receiving more money and diverting it, or shall we say, spending it on things directly related to this. As a cultivation facility, there may be a few extra patrols, but we don't have to station a police officer on Saturday afternoon when everybody's coming into town to buy stuff. So it turns out that the standard across the state so far, according to KP and according to the Green Meadows legal organization, they have a Massachusetts law firm too, it seems one percent to one and a quarter percent is the range for this kind of thing. So I'm thinking, when you think about it, I'm actually mildly concerned, if they do their projected business of 14 million in revenue, and by the way, the state will be monitoring that for us, so we don't have to spend a lot of time on it, that would be a one and a quarter percent, 175,000 a year. Now, we could put some into, you know, anything that is considered a drug diversion, a drug treatment, and not a marijuana diversion or marijuana treatment, but anything that is drug diversion, has to do with any kind of drugs and so on, the state is apparently at this point very happy to see the money go to. So that's why a dare officer, school resource officers, training, Narcan training, opioid counseling, all those sorts of things, so.
When you say the state, you mean the cannabis control commission?
Kevin, yeah, the problem is that there haven't been any test cases yet, because it's so new, and so nobody knows whether, for instance, one of my wondering is, there are a lot of older people who have arthritis and other oftentimes age-related afflictions, many of which anecdotally have been treated with success with marijuana. Well, is there research on that? Are some of our seniors perhaps dealing with pain medications? Is there an application by which they could say, gosh, we could legitimately fund some of COA with this money? Sort of extra money that frees up the money that it displaces, which would just stay in the general fund and be applicable to other things?
General speaking, the CCC is looking at costs that would incur. And so for example, in the case of retail, which is said, there's more traffic on a Saturday, so you need more police patrols and whatever else.
Yeah.
Same thing to some extent with cultivation, but it's not a max of three percent.
Well, it's two trucks running on about one and a quarter percent. Right.
But the point is, is that it's related to costs, and that could vary as to what the CCC considers cost over time. And it's not finalized yet for sure, as you point out. So order of magnitude though, your feeling is one and a quarter percent is acceptable amount, and that we have the ability to justify one and a quarter percent dollars' worth of extra cost that we would incur. Is that, is that a good summary?
It's a good summary. The only thing I would say at the end, Dick, is in some senses, how do we spend 175,000 dollars when the requirements are you can use it to offset direct costs of having a marijuana facility, that's from the CCC, or to broadly support drug diversion programs? I'm, it's, I mean, I think it's going to be a happy challenge to see if we can do that. For instance, extra patrols that officers might do, we could then put that into the police overtime account. There, the accounting rules for how you justify this have not been defined yet. And the expectation according to KP is if you go about this in good faith, they're going to give you a little bit of slack while they work this out, because they just haven't got, they haven't had towns come in and, you know, that for instance are getting half a million dollars and only spending 200 on this, and are questionably applying the other 300 to someplace else. That has not come up yet, so there's no case law, there's no practice.
So where that wording that came in, the direct cost wording, is that part of statute or rules?
You know, I don't know exactly, but it is, at least in the guidelines, and I don't know exactly where.
The good news is if it's a guideline or rule, it's something that the CCC.
We have cover of this.
If it's statute, then it is really subject to.
Yeah, it's not statute yet. It is not statute yet. And I suspect as time goes on, we will see if a lot within the guidelines is going to get converted into laws. But one of the examples Governor Baker has, this whole thing, you've got to spend the money just on those things. Governor Baker has filed a bill that would require towns who do receive this to create a separate fund into which it goes, and therefore, anything you spend out of that separate fund to then become transfers, needs to, they can more easily spot it and check and see that it's being used appropriately.
What it'll be used will be whether monies in that fund can be retained over fiscal years, so that the worst thing that happens is if we go out on 175,000 dollars and we can only allocate 100.
Right.
Only have 75,000 for a future year.
Right.
So as far as, it's not returned.
Yeah, and I don't think it is a spend it or lose it, or a spend it, you have to return it, but that's not been defined yet.
So we should be honest, I think in looking at it, that's the concept feel, but.
If it's impossible, we go back.
There are risks in it, it's a given.
Yeah, there are risks, but I don't think there are significant legal risks. I think the only risk is that we create an HCA that it turns out, you know, we're just getting too much money, we have to renegotiate down. They'll do that any time if they want. Let's not worry about that yet. I don't think it's very risky.
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand the concept of getting too much money.
Well.
That rings true.
KP is currently in the process of, because remember the CCC, the Cannabis Control Commission guidelines only came out on March 15th, and they're a little incomplete, and they're still filling in pieces even though they got the basic pieces out. They are starting to, right now, they just have this kind of anecdotal shopping list of, well, you could probably use it for this, for this, for this, for this, for this. What they're going to do is be working on a list of clearly approved uses and applications and so on, but we'll have to see.
To me, the key, acknowledge possible redundancy, I think it's real important. Yesterday, I think it was, I read somewhere a lengthy story about which were going in this area in Peabody, to some degree, Danvers. And the permits, as I understand, were issued for three possible dispensaries in the city of Peabody, one possibly going where the Brothers Cuzina Restaurant.
Oh, really?
It just happens to be that the nephew of the owner of the Brothers Cuzina is the applicant for the license, but. And another on the other side of Route 1, no, but, but point being, according to this story, those guys are getting three million.
I'm sorry?
Three percent.
Yes.
So I just, I want to be clear, it's not that we're considering negotiating for less or accepting less, but as you've stated very clearly, there seems to be a differentiation between what dispensaries pay and what.
I see it, I see a distinct separation there.
Yeah, and the expectation would be if we had a dispensary, you'd have patrols stopping you regularly, you might have inspectors in there, and for, and the counting of that time would then either go into payroll account or into an overtime account or something or other, we'd have direct expenses there. We'll be able to put some of that in, and, but how much and under what basis of some we don't know yet. So we're in this somewhat awkward position of, we could get this money and not know exactly how qualified to spend it, but let's go about it. There doesn't seem to be any risk in going about and doing a good faith agreement that is more or less consistent with lots of other towns, so it's not just us, it's a, it's a bigger issue, and sort of seeing how it falls out. I suspect there will be evolutions and changes going forward. So if we were, for instance, to do a five-year, that's the maximum term on this, I think we would want to include in there a provision, and KP has done this before, that it is reviewed either every year or every other year or something like that, so that we can, if there are changes, say, you know, either party can say we need to make a change.
Then that's my only other point, my second point, is that the term is not independently significant, significant in relation to other provisions in the agreement. So it's like, I don't get us ahead, I know we're at a slow conceptual stage, but, you know, it's like having a lease, it's a 10-year lease, but you can opt out after year two and after year five.
Yeah.
It's like one of those long football playing contracts where the guaranteed money is only in the first year, you know? So, and again, I'm sure KP will take care of us well in this, but it, it also has to do with, in this point particularly, exact language, so when we talk about review, it's like the collective mind, it's the same, it's an opener, an opener of life, well, what is, so, you know, is it a review? Is it a review, or do we have a right to opt out? Or, you know, so, I know that's, those are steps ahead, but.
And the language.
Constellation that's significant.
Right, the, the language in that would be, I'm looking for the copy of the Salisbury Agreement that was sent to you. Obviously, the Salisbury Agreement, which was in last week's thing, has language that KP has created that is now pretty much recognized in the state, and contains all the points that they are aware of in their broader experience, that should be included. So it's got a lot of stuff that I would not necessarily have thought of, but for instance, here is, now, they talk about R&amp;Ds, which is retail, excuse me, recreational marijuana distribution, but here's what they have, for instance, in the first year of operation, 1.25% about recreational marijuana distributions, gross sales revenue generated in the town during the first year of operation, plus the sum of, and so they've got some numbers there, but I, at this stage of the game, trust that KP can come up with the detail to cover us in an effective way. I frankly think that we're in the driver's seat on this, because the people who need the license, they have to work with us and come to an agreement with us, or all their investment to date and hopes and plans are for not. Because if we don't come up with an HCA that we sign, then, then we have a license that didn't happen, and they might turn around and go to Hamilton, although there's DVD on that. So there's a lot of things. If you want to see some of the detail that I've not included in the substantive points that I mentioned, you can look at this and just remember if it says recreational marijuana distributed, that you may very well be a little difference in context.
I don't think I still have that.
I think it's, back in, it's the Salisbury Agreement. So what I would like to do is, a couple of things, I would like to be able to, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator, approach Green Meadows and see whether I could get one and a quarter with a 50,000 minimum. They proposed less than that, or their, their sort of sample came in less than that, but I think that's appropriate from what I'm seeing in the other ones. And if they agree to that, which I suspect they will, what I would like to be able to do with the board's blessing is write a letter, which I'd be more than happy to send around in advance, so that it's clear it's from us, even if I might be the one who signs it, basically outlining the substantive terms, not all the detail, of the host community agreement. One of the things that came out of the planning board meeting, which I was not able to attend, there are a lot of people who are sort of feeling, what's this host community agreement? What's this host community agreement? And I thought perhaps a letter to the paper, putting in, listen, this is essentially, if you look at this sheet, if it contained this with a little more detail, just kind of saying, here's what you get with a host community agreement, this is what a host community agreement is, as a way of informing residents, you know, spreading the word that this is not just a, trust us, we'll take care of it later, but this is what we're at. What I would like to be able.
Well, this is not a general host community agreement, it's somewhat a specific one. For example, item one is medical marijuana cultivation only.
Yes.
This is one that's, isn't it a concept of a HCA, but rather the one that you're thinking about?
This is, these would be conditions that we would insist upon. And, and so to give people a bit of a sense of where we're covering this, the other piece, I think, is to make it clear that a host community agreement, which by law is negotiated by the selectmen and the town case, these are the things that we would want to see in there, and that we would be counting on, and if they signed it, they would be agreeing to that. One of the things I think is important to help people understand that without the HCA and a letter of support, and by the way, one of the conditions they have in theirs is that we will give them a letter of support if they sign the HCA, which would be appropriate if signed if we weren't going to support them.
Well, they need that in order to go to the state for the license.
That's a piece of cake.
He's made that clear from the start, yeah.
That's a given.
So, but what I would like to do is prepare something for publication in Paper Week from this Friday, if that's okay. Again, I'm happy to sort of send it around, I don't want to make a big thing out of it, but I do want to, it's big in terms of its importance to a lot of people to kind of see, this is where we're trying to go. And if that's, if that's appropriate, I will go ahead, as I say, I will not send it out before sharing it. So if there's, you know, individual feedback, I can incorporate what's necessary, but I think I could probably write everything you're going to need.
We'll do it that way.
You can draft a letter.
Okay.
We can't.
So can I draft a letter and send it around and just, and then?
You can send it to me and we can put it on.
And if you have an issue, then you can tell me, we'll let it go with that. What I would like to do is I will, you choose my game.
No, but you can do it for a second, but can't, it can be, but it can be distributed, it just can't be delivered.
Correct.
So for example, you're going to do it on the weekend, he could, I think, you know, one of you two guys can send it out to us.
Yeah.
For.
Here's the draft for discussion.
On Monday, Monday.
For the discussion on Monday, that's fine, that would be great, because I'll have time to get it, and that's good. So let me do that, and you're right, I was, as I was saying, I was thinking that it is sort of deliberation for what changes do you have, so.
Let me also say, not to belabor the point, but, you know, with complete respect for KP and all of it, did this, the guy personally, and so I did this, the clause here that talks about how long the agreement is.
Yeah.
And the review concept, I have a lot of questions about it, I'm just saying.
Yeah, that's directly from KP. The separate.
None of us are perfect, but it's so, so, not as a lawyer, but as a selectman.
Right.
I have a lot of questions in the, so again, I just want to.
And that could have been from the selectmen in Salisbury as well.
That's right. But so I just, so again, in terms of a letter, it's right, but in terms of us deciding on the term, to me, I can't do that without the content of the review, or we, they use the word renegotiation.
Right.
They need to relate it, that's what.
I don't think the term is going to be a big issue. What I'm inclined to do is at least get what we think the handshake agreement is on. If the bylaw passes, then we're in officially negotiating the fine language, and that's when the lawyers come in. That's when KP will put a draft in front of us, we'll look at it, and then we'll go back and forth on that.
For purposes, not the whole stuff, but for purposes of the letter, to me, something that says a five-year term with acceptable review.
Yeah, I could say with, with review, with interim reviews or something, duration number 10.
Yeah, I would even, I would say with, with acceptable reviews by the town, just we need it in that generic form.
Yeah, I won't make it generic in those ways, since I don't think those specifics are strong.
Even if it doesn't change hands, I mean, there may be, I mean, my bias would be, I'd like the long term, as long as we have safety.
Yeah, no, we'll, we can definitely do that. What I really want to do is make clear the restrictions, limitations, conditions, and basic agreements, and the money. I think for most people, that's 99% of the area. So I'll draft something, I'll send it to probably you, Debbie, to put it in Kelly's hands, and you'll officially go to the materials for Monday, and then we'll talk about it there. And essentially, we'll be a, as I said, publishing it in the papers is the best way. Some people will watch the media, but not.
It's on the, is on the agenda for the year?
Yes, that's what we're working on.
Do we, do we need to move forward with designated John Spencer as the point man for this project?
I'd like to be able to call Green Meadows as a representative of the selectmen, but not representing any agreement or action, and ask if, on behalf of the selectmen, the terms of $50,000 minimum, one and a quarter percent of gross sales would be acceptable. I think that's the only question that has looked different on what they kind of put out as here's what we think something would look like and what KP suggests.
Any discussion on that issue?
Yeah, I just am concerned with process, I don't want to get the great substance marked up in the process. So couldn't that, couldn't that be in the letter? That is an approval for.
What would be in the letter?
The, the money.
The money.
The letter, the letter's going to be approved by majority of the board or not? That's a super immediate.
Let me make a couple of observations. If in fact we write a letter, it's penned by one draft, and what essentially is writing a letter, that includes hard dollars, not percent, but hard dollars, those hard dollars are driven by a pro forma that the applicant, prospective applicant, the owner of the property that's being added, whatever, has put together. We have no control over some of those things, nor do I think that the applicant has control over things like $1,600 a pound for flowers, $250 a pound for plant material, per plant and whatever else, how many plants per, and there's these definitions of rooms and whatever else, and the volume that they can get. So I think it's extremely dangerous for us to take a pro forma from somebody who is proposing a business as the dollars that we will get. I think a better approach on the part of the applicant would be to put those things in writing in a letter to the editor, where the applicant is saying those things. I would be willing to provide a one and a half, one and a quarter percent, I estimate my volume would be this, it would equal to this in payments to the town in three years. Those are the things that the applicant has put to us that we cannot determine, well, we can determine in a sense that one and a quarter, one and one and a quarter, pick a number, so to speak, is a reasonable amount based on the state and what we've seen from other cultivators, whatever. But all of the details about the dollars and that, that belongs to the applicant. I have this, I have this spreadsheet here, and I fill the variables, and, and it's pretty scary when you think about what the variables are and what could happen. Again, because they, if they say their estimate, I'm all set. It's them saying it, that's what they say. So I can't imagine why they would not want to write a letter of that nature, and that's an input to negotiations with the Board of Selectmen on an HCA in the future. They put it in writing, and so we can challenge it later on, but everybody in the town knew what they said, and that's what we're working on. Rather than the Board of Selectmen told us, and it didn't happen and whatever else, I definitely think we should not write a letter, but have the applicant write a letter.
I just don't know if you just misspoke, or did you, when you said letter to the editor, did you misspeak or did you?
A letter to the editor, what?
You just said a little argument, it should be a letter to the editor, but I think you just misspoke, I want to, did you mean it should be a letter to the editor?
A letter to the editor. What?
As opposed to what part?
Is he, am I just, is he saying that there should be a letter to go to the newspaper instead of us, the editor, he said?
Oh, I, my understanding is Dick's saying that Green Meadows Farm should write a letter to the editor instead of us putting a.
Letter to the editor as in the newspaper?
Yeah.
Was that, was you proposing?
No. I'm proposing that we put a piece in there, be it an article or a, it would be.
An article, letters to the editor are.
I'm sorry, I meant.
Equal.
I think, Dick, one of my suspicions is the, their projections for future growth are already public record, and they're not going to change that.
Why don't they do the article in the paper?
Because I think it's stronger if the people who are representing the elected representatives are saying, this is what we stand for. One thing I don't want to do is start by having, if the Green Meadows puts a letter in and they put certain terms, I don't want to get in a position where we're negotiating in public. I don't want to get in a position where we're negotiating in public, well, they said that, let's ask for more. I think that's up to us. I think that they're negotiating.
Well, they can offer something, we can ask for more, it's not an HCA. But the point is, is that it's their numbers, is that in the case of dollars. If we can leave the dollars out and say, we'd be willing to negotiate an HCA that protects the town similar to you would have if you gave a license for alcohol, who is gonna be the manager, how are they gonna run it, what are the hours of operation? Those are typical things that you want to put in a license, say that, and in this case, that we would expect based on what the CCB, Cannabis Control Commission is saying, we would get of their revenue, one point or quarter percent. I mean, if you want to put that down, I would have, to put hard dollars in based on an applicant's estimate.
I'm not putting hard dollars. Dick, I would never put hard dollars.
Oh, I thought you, I thought you were estimating 140,000, 170,000.
The letter, I wouldn't say that. I, the HCA will, the letter will, the HCA will not have hard dollars except for the $50,000 minimum, period.
Mr. Chairman, may I get just a word through? I sincerely, give me a second, okay? I sincerely apologize. I may have misunderstood this whole thing. I thought you were talking about a letter to Pat and his guys.
No.
I'm sorry, I missed this. I thought you were trying to do was to set the stage to negotiate the HCA.
No, I'm thinking of a different purpose of all that, so please. What I would like to do is approach them verbally to see
The patent guys.
The patents, yeah, the Green Meadows.
Green Meadows, okay.
And the only place that they're not already on board by documentation, they've already sent, unrequested, but they sent on their own to me, that they said, these are terms we would consider, which turn out to match almost item for item what KP has. So everybody's well, I have the same template.
So I thought when we were working towards, give me a second, please. I thought we were working towards not a contract, but in a confirmatory letter, like a meeting, a, almost like a
No, the letter is for a different purpose.
So stay with me, one road at a time, right? So how do we, so the process for us to get from here to the full board's ascent, for lack of a better word, to the direction, how are we doing that?
This is part of that process, but I'm not assuming the deep negotiation details happens until after May 1st, if this article passes.
Okay, so step, there's two steps. I hope this is helpful, but cause I was lost. So maybe I'm, that this, step A is prior to May 1st, we're trying to give the town meeting, I would say, the essence of what's likely to be the components of the agreement.
Essentially the point of saying, we have a handshake on these terms. I'd like to not just guess at terms and then have a change. I would like, basically, cause I think we're coming into the high end of convertible things. And then if they say yes, then we can say, this is what we would expect. We're not committing, we're not gonna say this is what's gonna happen, but this is what we expect based upon preliminary conversations.
You can do that easily with qualifying language at the beginning.
That's gonna be the key, is the qualifying language and that's
I still thought it would be.
Something in writing.
It's an August 2011, whatever you want to call it. I think it's hard to do that stuff.
Well, I don't have any problem.
I'm gonna talk about the issues.
I can have the conversation. I can get them to say, would you send that to me in a confirming email? I can do that. And I'll have to send it to the top field.
All right.
I've been asked.
So then, so then where did that, so what's the, I'm not turning this, I said, what's the point of the letter to the editor?
The problem is there are a lot of people who don't know what an HCA is, don't know what it's going to cover, don't know why we have to do it and what it's gonna mean to the town in terms of money. Does it have guarantees? Does it have promises? Is it hopes? Is it what? And I think part of what we need to do as selectmen is inform the electorate that this is what would be involved in approving a particular medical marijuana facility and we have the applicants already lined up.
But what, but
If
But unless someone sees, why, John can write a letter to the newspaper as long as you don't present yourself as the full board or you just info, you certainly
But if I'm gonna include any information about numbers, I don't want to do that. Cause people want to know, what does this mean? And if I can say, cause it's already been in our documents, it's public record, that according to projections they have shared, a summary business plan they have shared with the board, they anticipate by the end of year three, 14 million dollars in revenue upon which the town would be eligible for one and a quarter percent thereof.
I think you got real procedural problems. I'm not, you know, I'm saying this on Dick's camera. I'm a big supporter of going this direction. I don't want to sell articles. But you could do that, I think, more easily by not presenting that Green Meadows will do this program.
No, I wouldn't say Green Meadows. I would say this is what an HCA typically would include and that in conversations with a potential applicant and with other people, including our legal team, these are terms we would expect.
Yeah, I won't keep going.
I mean, I don't want to do the language right now, but
I think if you do it without reference to the particular applicant, that you can get all the information out, but I, I own it to do, but you could
That's what
I'm trying to take you out of the whole group of what you need to be approved by the, by the whole board.
Now, I could just do that on Monday. I just want to have permission to go and find out, are they gonna be able to live with 50,000 and one and a quarter, which is on the high end. In fact, it is, but as high as any cultivation agreement that so far KP has done.
That's like, that's like separate from
But if I don't have a sense of money, that's what people want to see in this letter. They want to know what
As far as I said, they want to know what an HCA is. That's one of the
They want to know what's in it for Topsfield. They want to know
And I think the analogy to an alcohol license is a good start because you have things like the manager, you have to have the manager's name, you have to have hours of operation, things like that. But it's a more extensive one because it's an operation to grow things and, and other things that have to be done. But, but the concept is the same. And I think that's one thing that people are very interested in. There's such a thing and they hear about it. They'd like to know what it is. Dollars in sense, now that starts to come down to not a generic, but a very specific sort of thing. I mean, a very small operation, probably one or ten, seven dollars. A very big one is gonna be a different set of dollars. So I, I think, follow up to what Mark said here. I think we want to be careful how we
I don't want to do negotiations in a newspaper.
I don't want to do negotiations in a newspaper. I guess what I'm looking for is, do you agree based upon what the land board has asked for and has said they feel is essential, do you agree that putting some kind of information about an HCA in the hands of the public prior to the May 1 vote is going to be beneficial in helping them make an informed decision or not? If not, then just don't do anything.
What I'm, what I'm hearing is we're kind of hung up on the letter. You need to be able to go back to Green Acres.
Green Meadows.
Green Meadows. Greenville, Green Acres, yeah.
I don't think that's a meeting I'm leaving, that's all.
If you can have a conversation with them to clarify some of the unknowns and then we can utilize our formal deliberation under posted meeting on Monday to get some of these concepts out there in discussion with the board of selectmen. Typically, the reporter will go to that meeting and report on that meeting in any way.
Right.
So I'm just thinking that perhaps the letter is sort of getting us a little hung up. If you can do a little more digging and then we can present information again at the meeting on Monday.
If we can ask the reporter to report the terms as we discuss them in the meeting.
Well, then we can have information that we can hand to her that says, this is, I mean, whatever piece of paper you bring and read from, if you say
If I can do the letter, let the reporter do it. I don't have a problem with that. My goal is to get it out there.
The information out there.
My concern, the only concern I have going through a reporter is I've seen enough times when
Agreed.
facts have not been properly conveyed. And this is a short term, so we don't have time to fix it.
If you bring a piece of paper with your speaking points to the meeting, it's a public record and if the reporter requests it or anyone else requests it, you have to give it to her anyway.
Okay, and this is already
Even if she doesn't request it, it's public record.
And this is already a public record by my sharing with you, so
Correct. So we need to refine that a little bit more.
I can refine this to, yeah, okay.
But not to the extent that it becomes a negotiation. It becomes sort of a contextual discussion about if town meeting happens and that gets approved, then this is the context by which we, you as a board, will negotiate the terms of the HCA.
The key on this is there were three parts. One is, this is what an HCA is intended to do and how you can spend it. This is what the terms could include. And this is why they need the HCA. And if they don't get an HCA, they can't do business with us. So we have control. That's the three parts of this thing right there. This is the information. I want to be sure. I will rework this a little bit, take out some of the future stuff.
There's difference.
Oh, I just put the last, the last
There's more at the bottom of the more updated ones.
All I put on the, on the bottom of this is, in order for medical marijuana cultivation and manufacturing facility to be licensed by the state, they must have both an HCA, a signed HCA and an official letter of support from the town. Within these, the state, without these, the state will not license or after operations have commenced, will revoke the license. Just to make it clear that the HCA is the gate we have control. So I will, I'll just tune this up a little bit more for a version. This, this remains in your form, remains
Still.
Still, but I'll, I'll come up with one that we could pass out if necessary, that would be helpful for a reporter reporting on it rather than plan to deal with the question, do we do a letter as an individual to the board or whatever? We can still obviously, we should talk about it on Monday.
Is the board in favor of you going back and touching base with them again?
That's my next question. I assume from this conversation that everybody's in favor of John going back and talking to the patents about this.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. I mean, they have been, we've been in touch and they're saying, when are we gonna get in touch, when are we gonna do this? So I've had logistics only back and forth and I said, I can't, I can't do this until I have the board's awareness and update. But this now allows me to speak to them about numbers, cause I have, it's been tough, but I've not wanted to talk any numbers with them.
Would they, would they now be willing to come to our meeting on Monday? Because they put, we have this presentation of five pages here, whatever, their proof, their profile. To have them come in and let us ask some questions about this. How did we get, this is an official, attached to a letter of some sort? This presentation?
That, that was unsolicited. I asked a question, just to collect information as a citizen. I asked a question saying, so how much volume are you planning? Because I had learned from KP that the state will monitor the volume and that's how we'll know what the dollars are. We don't have to go there and do our own audits. And that's what Chris sent to me without any
So it went to you. It had not come to the board officially?
But I did
What do we have, what do we have?
I got a verbal from him, you can share this with the board, which is why I shared it with you.
Okay.
First time you've seen it, it's right there.
Okay.
Yeah.
What things do we have from Green Meadows at this point? Just some, I should know, maybe, and I don't. One thing is this, which was informal, but they agreed, so
We have their initial letter.
It's awful nice to have a couple of letter that says, because it has their logo at the bottom, which is nice, but there's essentially no signature from anybody.
We have an official letter that I think is in your warrant. Well, it's my, it's in my warrant book, so I'll share it with you clearly, that it was way back when, when they exhibited interest and they wanted to go before the board of selectmen and we just thought it was premature at that point, because we didn't have enough information. So I'll pull out that letter and perhaps when you speak with them, you can ask if they wanted to provide an updated letter based on any of the information we have been discussing.
Definitely invite them to
I think that's great.
To first of all
Is that okay with the chairman?
I don't have a problem with that at all. Fact of the matter is, they said early on, they would like to come to the board of selectmen. And, and, and we thought it was all premature, because none of us knew what an HCA was, okay? And now we do know, and now I think it's probably appropriate to have them come and
Right. They've been anxious to come for a long time and I felt that until we had sort of organized our thinking some. And frankly, I've had two conversations with them in question. One, two months ago, just trying to get some basic information with the permission of the town administrator, just to better understand that, this is stuff that Kelly was gonna do anyway, and I, on her behalf, was able to ask those questions. That information basically resulted in the sharing by KP of sample agreements. And you saw Amy's summary of sort of the percentages for various towns. Most of them were for recreational or for retail distribution. But that was the outcome of that call. And then the second call was just checking with her about essentially details on how to represent the board and this and that, and whether we needed to do an HCA before the bylaw, the bylaw before. Her view was it didn't matter. Bottom line, we made a decision internally that we're not gonna sign anything prior to not do form negotiations until and if the, that zoning bylaw changes.
And I would say especially since zoning is not for this particular thing. The zoning is for a zone of which this is an potential applicant or such, if we get it.
Yep.
But if that particular applicant wants to come forward and say, I realize you're having a zoning, if it were to pass, I'm interested in doing the following in this location within that proposed zoning. I think that's
I think that would be totally appropriate. And I think they would be more than happy to come up.
And by the way, if we know anybody else who wants to do it in another part of the business park, they're invited too. But I haven't heard from any, but no, I'm sure there isn't.
Come on.
The point is, it's open to anybody.
Don't get, let's not get crazy.
The point is, is we're not
It wouldn't be a bad idea to have some of yours.
We're not showing any particular favoritism towards anybody. It's the over what has come forward. It's appropriate to ask them in preparation for this, what would they, whatever. I think that makes a lot of sense.
So the other thing that's interesting here is it's the business park and the patents area, those are the areas. So that's how the spot zoning is evolved. When you think about it, the patents area happens to be primarily agricultural currently and will continue with that. The business park is not agricultural. So in reality, if somebody came in and wanted to go to another site, they'd probably have to plan an indoor facility, which would be a fairly major thing. They'd have, they'd have to basically get enough space to do it. They'd probably have to buy the building. They'd have to wait till thing, till tenancies and our rent agreements are done. And so I think that there's at least a year before anything would start to take shape, if somebody want to do that. Say nothing of the rather high expense of trying to grow indoors, cause then you're gonna have the grow lights and everything. And now you've got the septic systems and so on. You don't have natural land around. There's a lot of issues that we have to deal with. When you've already run a farm, you've already been using the land and water use. This case is actually gonna be lower on that. The burden's gonna be much higher if it's going to I think we'll have lots of opportunity to look at, and my guess is maybe another bylaw that Martha is thinking of proposing next year that would restrict cultivation in that area. But I don't know how she's planning that, but the legal thing is, I'm focused primarily on whether or not we will get the opportunity to essentially decide on this. My biggest concern is I want voters to understand that their chance as a community of citizens to say yea or nay to a marijuana cultivation thing, given the fact the board is generally in favor because the numbers look good and we don't have overriding moral or concern, safety issues around this, that if they vote for this overlay district, we're likely to go forward with this HCA and make this happen. If they don't vote for it, then we won't. So this is the citizen's chance to vote on this issue. And ironically, it's not about medical marijuana, it's about this overlay district.
And you will make that clear at town meeting?
I will. Yeah, and I'm, Martha will too, but I think this is where having something in the paper about it will help make it clearer. I don't want people to feel that, you know, a couple of people have said in the past, is this gonna come up for town meeting for a vote? I say, actually, it doesn't. But the way you, you can express your feelings directly to the selectmen because we serve you. And if, there's an overwhelming bunch of letters that say, don't do it, don't do it. Even if the overlay passed, then I think we would take a long, hard look and maybe, you know, could change our minds. I don't foresee that happening, but I want people to realize the easiest, strongest, simplest, most direct way to make a vote on whether we have medical marijuana cultivation in Topsfield is through this overlay zoning vote, even though it doesn't talk about a particular place, it just is the general.
And to the town of Topsfield, what we're saying is the value is the dollar amount. There's no other particular thing that we're saying is the value is the town.
Yeah, I don't think there's a whole lot more, unless you are, you know, morally inclined to support medical marijuana research and you want it here for other reasons, but that's gonna be a very small percentage. I think for most people, if we weren't gonna get any money out of it, we'd probably say, let's not bother, if we were gonna get lots of money, you know, ten million dollars a year, we could spend on everything, we'd say, of course, now here we are in between, we're gonna get some extra tax revenue because the valuation of the land is gonna go up, and if their estimate of investing three and a half million goes in, three million plus the half million of the value of the land, theoretically, we could be over fifty thousand dollars in unrestricted tax revenue that goes into the general fund, that's a positive, and then this other money hopefully would offset some current expenses and allow us to free some money for other things, including just sort of lowering other expenses, so.
I missed part of the meeting, and I apologize for that, but I was taking care of another facet of town business, now on that phone call. Did I hear that, did I understand right that you said there's a fifty thousand dollar minimum as part of the fee, or is that the real estate tax?
No, that's outside of the real estate tax, so that there would be this, it's restricted money, but fifty thousand we could absorb in a heartbeat through DARE. Or Triton Council, and other things that's.
One point two five percent, minimum is fifty thousand.
So it's a proposal, a proposal, based on input from KP.
A proposal.
That's the proposal.
Yep.
Okay, but it's a proposal, but regardless of how their business goes.
Yeah.
Exactly.
They will provide a minimum of that much from their operation.
Okay, of some minimums of sound amount.
Regardless of their operation.
So for instance, if they did a million dollars worth, and, you know, one point two five percent of that would be twelve thousand five hundred, they still owe us fifty thousand.
Okay.
Once they get to the point where their one and a quarter percent is over fifty thousand, they owe us whatever that amount is.
Whatever that amount is.
So essentially, we have one and a quarter percent with a fifty thousand dollar floor, is what we're proposing. And that gives us something to count on, if we made a commitment to funding an SRO through this, for instance, we don't want, if something happens in.